Alright, good evening everybody, thank you for coming out, we appreciate your patience. We had a meeting that ran over a little bit longer than we anticipated. So I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Education. It's Monday, January 24th, 2022 at 6:06 PM. As the record show, all Board members are present. If you would, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, good evening Board, we have an agenda before us, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Salute.
Mr. Glenn, Mr. Ritter, any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda is approved. First up this evening, we have our recognitions, our class.
Yeah, we have our Terrific Tigers tonight. We are pleased to recognize our January Terrific Tigers. These are students from each of our buildings who have been selected to receive this award based on their service to others, their leadership, and their scholarship. We'd also like to recognize the parents for all they do, so if you'd stand when your student is recognized, we appreciate it.
Alma Schrader Elementary, Kellen McKenna, kindergarten, son of Kimberly and Jeffrey McKenna. Kellen is a hardworking student who's always on task and is eager to learn. He jumps at the chance to help out a fellow student. Kellen sets a good example for others and he can always be counted on to be a good role model. He is trustworthy and responsible. Kellen helps make the classroom a fun and friendly learning environment. Blanchard Elementary, Jacoby Frick, kindergarten, son of Shanna and Jeffrey Frick. Jacoby was chosen as a Terrific Tiger because of his incredible social skills. Within the classroom, Jacoby is always striving to be the best he can. He's a wonderful friend to his peers, a hard worker at all times, and shows kindness to all students. We are grateful to have Jacoby at Blanchard and excited for him to receive this well-deserved award. Clifford Elementary, Max Maldonado, 4th grade, son of Zitlin and Ivan Maldonado. Max uses his gir behavior all of the time. He asks questions during class and is always eager to learn. Max is kind to others and is a wonderful student. He's a great role model for other students at Clifford. Congratulations, Max, great job. Franklin Elementary, Kenzie Emerson, 4th grade daughter of Tiffany and Derek Emerson. Kenzie is an amazing student, she works very hard each and every day. She always does her best work the first time and loves to lend a helping hand to her classmates. She is a friend to everyone and wants to help everyone succeed. Kenzie is truly a terrific Tiger and a role model for all students at Franklin Elementary School. Jefferson Elementary, Seville Bell IV, 1st grade, son of Rashonda Smith. Seville is an outstanding role model in all areas, no matter what is going on around him, Seville is always doing the right thing. He's a picture of kindness, often speaking up when he sees someone not treating others right. Seville is a leader and he takes school seriously, wanting to learn the best to the best of his ability. He's worked extremely hard this year, Seville is a joy to have as a student. Central Middle School, Scarlett Whitford, 5th grade, daughter of Emily and Andrew Whitford. Scarlett is such a great role model for other students. We can always count on Scarlett to step up when needed, whether it is inside or outside of the classroom. She's always prepared and ready to learn. We're proud to have Scarlett as our Roaring Tiger of the Month. Keep up the good roar, Scarlett. Terry W. Kitchen, Junior High, Hayden Collier, 7th grade, daughter of Kelly Hicks. Hayden is an outstanding student, she takes each assignment seriously, going above and beyond the expectations. She also works very well with every student in her group, making sure each one is included and succeeds. We're extremely proud to nominate Hayden for the Terrific Tiger Award. Central High School, Grace Laramore, 12th grade, daughter of Lori and James Laramore. Grace is an energetic, caring student that leads by example. She treats everyone with dignity and respect, always checking on people and lending a helping hand. She definitely lights up the hallway with her smile. Congratulations Grace, you make us proud. Central Academy, Blaine McCullough, 10th grade, son of Hannah and Tyler McCullough. Blaine is an outstanding student who always has a smile on his face and is just fun to be around. His personality brightens every class he is in and he is a student each teacher recruits to have in class. Academy is very proud of Blaine, he represents our school very well. Alma Schrader, Christopher Sparks, 1st grade, son of Shaniqua and Christopher Sparks. Christopher has a caring and loving personality that lights up the room. He's responsible, helpful, and an overall outstanding student. Keep up the great work, Christopher, we're so proud of you.
If you're here for Terrific Tigers, you can leave or you can enter out for the meeting, it's up to you guys.
Michael Anders here tonight? No, he's not here. We have a representative from local Kiwanis Club who'd like to present a check. Coach King, you want to come on up? The floor is yours, you want to say anything? On behalf of the Kiwanis Club?
On behalf of the Kiwanis Club, we're glad to lend this check $1,500 to the Waker Room at the Waker Act.
That's awesome.
Hey, it's good to see you.
Thank you.
Wow, thank you guys.
That's impressive. Any other recognitions, Dr. Glass?
That's it for tonight.
Alright, so next up, we have our information proposals and comments from the audience. And before we get to that, so based on quite a few things that have been going around on social media, I thought we should, as a Board of Education, kind of clear up how this portion of the meeting works. While this is a public meeting, it's not a meeting of the public except for this particular section. So our Board policy is the DDH, and it reads, "To provide for full and open communication between the public and the Board of Education, the Board authorizes the following avenues for exchange of information, ideas, and opinions." When it comes to agenda items, it says, "Any member of the public who wishes to have an item placed on the agenda will present the request in writing to the superintendent or designate. The request must be submitted pursuant to Board policy and received one business day prior to the scheduled meeting. The item will then be appropriately placed on the agenda. The Board reserves the right to impose reasonable restrictions on the number of items to be considered. If the meeting agenda is full, the Board reserves the right to reschedule an item for the next regular meeting. Board may refuse to address an issue that has not gone through the appropriate grievance procedures, and the Board reserves the right to waive formalities in emergency situations within the limitations of the law." In the Regarding Public Comments section, "Any patron or group of patrons wishing to address the Board shall make a written request to the superintendent at least one business day prior to the meeting. A specifically designated time will be set aside for public comments and regular Board meetings of the Board of Education. The following rules will be applied to the public comment portion of the meeting. The Board will establish a time limit for the public comment period. No individual will be permitted to speak more than once during this period. Individual comments are limited to no more than three minutes, and the Board may limit the number of spokespersons per group or point of view. And then during that particular section, because the Board doesn't have the opportunity to either get all of the pertinent information that is around that particular item, we reserve the right not to have a conversation or a dialogue with individuals unless one is requested of that individual in a later meeting." Just wanted to put that out there to kind of clarify, because I think at our last meeting, some things were brought up, and my social media basically was saying that the Board didn't care about the items because we didn't have a conversation, although an opportunity was given to have a conversation regarding those particular items in a closed session. The individual chose not to, so they wanted to have it in an open session on the comments section. With that, I will bring up Ms. Langston. She was the only person that asked to address the Board this month. Good evening.
Good evening. I'd first like to say that I was given the opportunity to speak during the closed session last month, however, I felt like maybe I was trying to be silenced during that, so I I wanted to make sure that the public was aware of what's going on as well. It's not that I didn't want to speak to you privately at all. That being said, I appreciate you allowing me to speak tonight. I'm here to talk about a subject that I know some of you are very passionate about, and that is Tiger pride. You may know that my husband and I have five children. Our oldest graduated from CHS last year, and let me just tell you, we were the loudest family at that graduation ceremony. We were so proud. We also have senior this year. We've been working as a team with K public schools for a long time. In that time, we've had the pleasure of working with some really kind, dedicated, hardworking, and underappreciated teachers, staff, and administrators. Of course, we also have Sydney at CJHS, a child at CMS, and our baby is a little first grader this year. So I'm here for the long haul. You and I still have many years of teamwork ahead of us. At this point in our relationship, it would be a lot easier for me to enroll my kids in private school. It could be easier for us to sell our house and move to Jackson. But I'm here tonight, and I've committed to coming to these meetings every month, not because this is fun for me, but because I care so much. As you know, I spoke here at the last School Board meeting, and your response was, "Well, underwhelming." I've reached out and sent emails to each one of you that have gone entirely unanswered. I do find it interesting that you think the solution to my daughter being threatened multiple times at school with a knife is for her to sit down with the perpetrator and talk it out, yet not one single one of you has shown any interest in talking this out with me. Unfortunately though, it's not just me. I've watched recordings of other School Board meetings. I've talked to other parents, parents who have given up their Monday nights to come speak to you, to ask for your help, with the most important part of their lives, their children. The Board generally sits politely, just like tonight, and appears to listen to the speaker, but there's no follow-through. There's no response. They leave feeling like I felt after the last meeting, insignificant, ignored, defeated. Mr. McDonald, I heard you give a speech last month about Tiger pride. I see billboards all over town and signs in your yards that say, "Restore the Roar." The word "restore" implies that we are trying to get back what once was, that we are trying to heal the sense of community we once had. People begin to heal the moment they feel heard. If you want to heal the community, listen to the community members, respond to them. So tonight, that is my challenge to each of you. Find it inside yourselves to listen and respond to the people who care enough to come to you. Thank you.
And Ms. Langston, I will say again, you have the opportunity to meet with the Board on an individual basis because of the content of your concerns and the grievances. We've offered you the opportunity to meet with us to talk about those issues, and you have declined to do that. Now, if you want to sit with the Board and have a discussion, go through the process and request a meeting with the Board, and we're more than happy to meet with anybody that requests that. We have not shunned anybody, and we're not silencing anybody. We just have procedures and processes that don't allow us to talk about individual student issues in open session. So again, you have the opportunity to meet with us as a Board, and you, and your family, if you have concerns, but you haven't chosen to do that. So again, the opportunity is open for you to do that.
Kind of like, one comment, I think the other thing about this is, we need to recognize there are privacy considerations that are made by our Board. We didn't write rules on student privacy laws. These are laws that exist that say we cannot, in an open session, have these conversations about anybody's student. And ultimately, I think the challenge is, again, I'll speak on behalf of myself, I think my fellow Board members, when we come here on Monday nights, we all want to hear our time, is because we share your interest. Again, I have three students in this district, one at the junior high, one at the high school, one... So you're in the middle of the world, I get that. They have been through both schools all the time. And I think the challenge is, we care enough to be here and try to figure out, solve problems. And I think ultimately, when statements get made that we don't have the ability to respond to in an open session, it's like being able to give information about someone in a court of law and not let you have a statement, because we couldn't say anything. And so it is that we don't care, it's that we're prohibited from making comments on a private, dispiriting address. And we care for the fact that you say that, because as parents, we need to hear that, we need to be validated, and you're the only man or woman who has stood up and said that. Now, this other student's name has never been brought up. Understand, understand. And I want... But at least you had the decency to speak to us and say, "We can't do this." Look, my one final encouragement would be, and again, we had a big conversation about being able to put on the record some of this concern, because the idea that somebody could say, "Nobody's listening to me," or "Nobody's responding, so I don't think you don't care," and you're kind of a bunch of drones who just sit there and nod their heads, it's offensive to me, and I do want to come out and say that. Because I come here to say here and try to help solve problems for your children, for my children, for anybody who has kids in this district. And ultimately, it's to somehow, in this world that we live in, that I can go on to any social media platform and say something, whatever I want, and some group of people are going to get outraged by it, whether it's true or not, I'm not talking about your situation, anybody who's in your family, but I've seen different things that get posted as fact, and people get fired up, and it just divides us. And I would encourage everyone in this ring, let's work together to figure out how to make this school system the best version it can be, because that's why we're here. And if that's why you're here, I share your concerns, and I'd love to talk about it. And we didn't want to talk to you specifically in closed session to silence you, we want to have a conversation, we can't ask you to do that.
Well, you can see how it would feel that way.
Okay.
And so I'm not, I'm not trying to project feelings on you that maybe aren't true, okay? It's just from my perspective, I'm going to... It wasn't like you can come to the closed session and then the open session, it was like you can come to the closed session instead. I didn't know it's not true to them to vote, and then I stayed after the last meeting thinking maybe somebody would like to talk to me. Also, a private email, I did email each of you privately back, at least saying, "Hey, I got your email," you know, I mean, that's common courtesy, "I got your email, we're looking into it, thank you." That would be something...
So I can't speak for the rest of the Board?
You did reply to the first one. You did reply to the first one, that's my fault. That is true, you did reply to the first one.
After meeting, okay.
And I'd be happy to reply to anybody's email, I didn't, I first started this thing, I didn't even sure what I was allowed to reply to, and I replied to you frankly. And I think it's almost deeply insulting for you to send me, for someone to send me an email, and me to send something back saying, you know, like a form, "Thank you, I've read your complaint and ultimately can't comment on it." That doesn't seem very awful either, and so admit, I'm happy to send that email to anybody who wants to email me, I don't think that I can't comment on, but I would rather engage in a conversation that we're allowed to have, to say, "If there's problems that we need solving." God knows, every district has problems, right? I mean, we've got kids who struggle, we've got families who struggle, and ultimately, that's going to only get solved when we work together. And my theory is that this is getting more polarized, where somehow like, there's an angry group saying, you know, "You guys don't listen." And I can promise you that people in this ring listen, and I can promise you, we spend hours and hours and hours volunteering our time to go figure out, can we make this a better place? And doing it with the tireless work of teachers, administrators, and staff, and students, and families, and parents, and again, we're only going to plan on this, doing it together. Because figuring out how to get fired up, and get other people fired up, isn't going to solve anything, in my opinion. For those of you who want to help, pitch in, there's plenty of ways to go around. We'd love to have you be a part of it. So help us help you and your kids. Sorry for going on a soapbox.
I appreciate the soapbox personally.
Alright, so next up, we have our informational reports for the month. Board Presidents' Reports first. I don't have anything other than welcome back to everyone, this is our first meeting of the new year, and hopefully this year will be better in so many ways than last year, but last year was better than the year before, so with that, I'll turn it over to Superintendent for his role.
It's hard to believe that January's almost over with, it seemed like we just had Christmas, but here we go, it'll be a race to the end. But we had three CHS, CTC students who were invited to the Governor's State of the State Address last week. Nick Hodges, Lydia Strickland, Onwind, sir, made the trip and were acknowledged as students benefiting from career and technology training. I think that's super exciting, to be recognized by the Governor. The Junior High is hosting a blood drive on February 9th, 2-6, in the gym lobby. I know that the Red Cross is hurting, they've got a blood shortage right now, so I encourage everyone to donate if you can. A reminder, the K Drata Public School Foundation Penguin Party is February 12th, that's just right around the corner. The work that the Foundation does for the district is vital and so important for us to reach our goals and provide extra resources to our classrooms. So I encourage you to support the Foundation if you have the ability to do so. Last but not least, Randy McWilson, if he was here, I'd have him step up and be recognized, but he is the mastermind behind all the Snow Day videos, and all the kudos and everything go to him. I hope that it brings a smile to your faces, and I always enjoy hearing the kids talk about it, look forward to it. And if you didn't know, the students have a large part to play in those Snow Day videos. They are behind the production, they do a lot of the video editing along with Mr. Wilson, so it is a teaching moment for those kids, and I'm very, very proud of them. They always make me look good, and that's not easy to do. That's all I got.
Just one question, aren't we supposed to have a little snow, do you have Snow Day videos?
Yeah. Much so.
I just want to know, like, if you want our help, there are many people here who are more than willing to help, so what's the next step? What do I have to do next to be able to be heard? Like, what do I need to do now? You told me what we need to do to work together, what do I need to do so that we can happen?
Well, I guess, I don't want to digress here, but I guess to me, if you see a real problem in our district and you want to propose solutions to them, email us, I'll email you back. And again, I think there's not a lot of restrictions, only if you do, if it's not related to student discipline or privacy issues. So if you've got ideas on things, better problems that you want to fix, to have solutions, we'd love to hear them. And again, I think there's plenty of problems in every district, there's not many to solve, so if anyone wants to solve them.
So I guess, first off, I would say, if you have a teacher issue, go to the teacher. If the teacher doesn't respond, go to the principal. If you have a school issue, go to the principal. If the principal doesn't respond, go to the superintendent. The superintendent doesn't respond, then it gets to the Board. So I mean, there's, it depends on...
I understand the chance.
Okay, so it depends on what the issue is, and who is responsible for it. Because everybody has a misperception that you come to the Board and the Board's going to snap their fingers and everything is fixed. I mean, we basically have one employee. Our employee is Dr. Glass, he reports to us, we are responsible for watching him, he is in charge of the rest of the district, and then everybody reports to him directly. So it depends what the issue is for one, what the grievance is for two, and what the procedure is to get it to where it needs to go in order to fix it. So first conversation that we would have to have, sit down, just like we are now, in a preferred setting, and have that discussion on what you perceive is the issue and who is responsible for taking care of that issue. But coming here for three minutes and talking about whatever you see out there and then expecting the Board to be able to fix it that night, doesn't fix anything, because as in our policy, we don't have the option to respond to you unless you come to us and either request an agenda item to be placed on the agenda, or to have a session with all of the Board where we can sit down and talk it out.
I'm not from Missouri, so knowing that I would have to present this in writing 24, 48 hours in advance, it's unbeknownst to me. I do have 18 years in education, and that's still the first time I've heard that. I do have mobile concerns about security and child welfare, not on a staff issue, I think the staff that I've met, it seems fantastic. I don't have an issue with the Board, you're all volunteers, and I take my hats off to you, but there are huge issues that need to be addressed, like student safety. And I'm not talking about her kids, I'm talking about the stories I hear from my kids. So I don't necessarily want that in closed meetings, because those are private minutes that are sealed.
No, they're not sealed, that's incorrect. They are not, they are, closed session minutes are not sealed. Closed session minutes are available to anybody that requests them, they're online.
I don't care if I'm an order of a parent and I pay taxes.
So the reason why there's the requirement to get on the agenda is such a nice stuff, so the Governor's always stuff publicly. And so there's rule behind why this exists, it's not just made up because we don't want to be able to talk.
Sure.
And when I said, "I'm happy to talk to you after this important meeting," like, we got to be a part of this, but I'll give you my email address, I'll give you my phone number, you can call me, you can sit down and talk. I mean, whatever we want to do to go figure it out.
Well, that's why I asked.
I understand, nobody's trying to hide it, or silence anybody. Again, I think the more kind of that perception perpetuates, the worse our problems become. And so, again, if you have concerns about safety, you can ask the校长, so I encourage you to get them up with the school administration, the school travel directors, because ultimately, having promised you, the administrator at that school, their number one priority, first one is the student safety, and then it's education. And so if you feel like they're not doing their job, let them know your concern, let them know if you think they can do that right now. I think everybody would love, and welcome, constructive feedback and say, "I think you're facing a great opportunity to do your job better." It's really easy.
Next up, we have our program evaluation for the month. This month was technology. Mr. Hall, thank you for that. Mr. Hall, thank you for that evaluation. Did anyone have any questions for Brian? Well, thank you. Our technology just keeps getting better and better, and I think it helps promote student education to kind of the next level, especially in today's society. And with COVID and everything, having that external learning capability is needed for students, especially if they're quarantined because of the illness. Thank you for all your efforts. Thank you to Mr. Russell. All right, next up, we have our academic services.
Well, we don't have a formal report, but we, just so you all know, we are in hiring season, so our next year, so if you have time to pay for connections, you know, create a recruitment for us, we'll be posting new positions later this weekend. Probably they'll continue to come in just that time of year.
Next up is our IT. No reports, all right. CTA representative here this evening? She is?
I'm always here. Um, well, I'll be very short. CTA, we will meet on February third, so next week, Wednesday. We switch to just meeting once every quarter. I just know, because it's my building, but Central Academy has an esports team, not a club, a team, and we are competing on the state level, so that's cool. And joining Tyler Loppi, I got selected to be on the Ed Policy Board Committee at the state level. So we'll have another Cape Girardeau representative. So, other than that, any questions for me?
How many members do you have in your group?
Like, on our board, or like?
In association.
I know, we just got our numbers. It was like... If I got my phone out, I could look at the Excel sheet, but...
That's not, I didn't put you on the spot.
No, no, no.
At least we're at like fifty percent of MSTA CTA members versus your teachers that are in staff.
Yes, I would like the number to increase, and we're hoping with changes that we're making, and we're having less turnover on our exec boards, where we're more knowledgeable, because it's kind of been like, bah. Yeah, so we're hoping with that, it will help people want to be members. And I realize, like, a lot of new teachers, and even in my building, it's their third year, and they were like, "Oh, I didn't even know anything about MSTA." And I was like, "What? You work at an alternative school, and you don't know about the insurance that we can have to cover you?" So I think some of it's just, like, pushing it out, so we're hoping to fix that later.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Next up, we have our treasure fund. Mr. Dudd.
This report is filed in December the first of last quarter, two thousand twenty-one. We started beginning fund balance, December first, at five point seven million in the general fund. We've received fifteen point three million as we're starting to get in from the tax money from county. Expenses were two point eight million. One point five million was transferred to the special lending fund to cover salaries and benefits of our surplus staff, leading us to an annual fund balance of sixteen point seven million. The cash investment detail is listed below, which is the banks that are running this. Does anyone have any questions?
Great report. Next, we have our support services report.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I quit construction on May. Construction is continuing to move along on the Jefferson project. They've got price of ten weather days where they haven't been able to complete work, which is too bad considering the time of the year. So we're at the bottom of the pool. It's been poured. The prepay walls are up, the interior kitchen remodeled. Those walls are up. Unfortunately, it continues to get pretty dusty on that side of the building, and we're trying to keep that as clean as possible. There's growing pains that we're experiencing, but we're trying to be as cognizant of that as possible and keep the destruction to the kids as minimal as possible. The field is at the high school for baseball softball. It's getting close to completion. The fence is going up. The turf has been laid. We're now, the turf is being moved together on the fan field. And we're looking forward to the completion of that, probably about another two weeks, and everything should be wrapped up as long as the weather holds for us. So tomorrow's going to be a cold day, we're going to slow a few things down. We'll be able to work on a few other things, but you'll probably start seeing progress there. Food service, our whole entire food service staff is just continuing to do an outstanding job. Again, we still have supply issues, but we are getting from everybody what we can to continue it off with the meals, breakfast and lunch. Free for everybody, our food staff, our cooks, our food prep staff, and our servers, just all of you are still just continuing to pull together and feed our kids daily, and our staff as well. So continue to have struggles there, but hopefully, they don't see it on the other side of the counter. But again, I just can't talk highly enough for Denver Florida and our staff. One bit of information that we've received over Christmas break, which is exciting news, we did receive a Department of Justice grant for the adoption of the Bible program, two to two, three hundred and seventy thousand dollars for potential items for our district that will go towards school safety. It is a seventy-five twenty-five grant, will go towards things such as concrete towers, updating our radio systems, trial kits for classrooms, for all staff, updating cameras, as well as some solar resistant film, and certificates, and so on and so forth. So we're excited for that grant. Other than that, I have no other announcements. Unless you have questions on the service. Questions?
Thank you for the report. Next up, we have our board reports. First up, MSBA delegate report.
I don't really have anything to report. Just the, I don't remember the number, the bill. But we've talked about this before, with moving for elections to the November election that's being discussed right now. MSBA stance on that is, we want to keep it in April, keep it nonpartisan. So, you have opinions? Please point them. That's all I have on that.
Any questions? Next up, legislative report.
Yeah, just to kind of glom onto that, that it's filing season, and it's going to be an interesting legislative session with lots of fun public school bills that'll be coming out, so just keep your eyes peeled and keep watching the news and pay attention to the registers.
Jeff, was there something that just came out that one of the bills that was passed last year was found to be, I don't want to say unconstitutional, but there was...
It was struck down, and that's in consent.
Oh, okay.
One of the bills was struck down, the other bill was upheld, so NSBA inadvertently took out some language that should have been added, shouldn't have been added.
Anything from the Cape Foundation?
Just a reminder that Penguin Party is...
Uh, next up, we have approval of consent agenda items. This month, we have minutes of previous meetings, December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one, and January twentieth, two thousand twenty-two, payment of bills, board policy BBB, appointments to City of Cape Tiff, which is a tax increment financing commission, vocational technical education enhancement grant proposal for two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, and updated reentry plan. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Ritter, any discussion on any of those?
Uh, Dr. Glass, can you just talk briefly about the updated reentry plan?
Yeah, I actually, I thought I'd talk to you, but it's just lately updated reentry plan. We presented that last Thursday, I guess it was, some details that we were switching to.
So, so one of the things that we are looking to have doing is, we're still going to continue to do our positive case tracking, but we are going to not do the close contact.
The close contact, Tracy. Thank you. So one of the things that we're going to be doing is, when we do a close contact, when there is a close contact in a classroom, we are going to send out a blanket email saying that it is highly recommended that they mask. So we are switching to that specific classroom. So parents will be getting emails for that classroom, just for safety reasons, to let them know that they can, it's recommended that they highly mask at that time. And that's really the change that we made at this time.
Any additional questions? And this board policy BBB is the one that we're referring to, being added back into...
We're reverting to the prior.
Prior, yeah.
Yeah. It basically says, if you have two candidates, if you have a bond issue, you still have to put those two candidates on the ballot, which I don't know if it makes a lot of sense, but there's two vacancies, you have two candidates, you still have to put them on the ballot. If you have a bond issue.
Yeah, so if there's a school business, then you have to put them off. If there's not, then...
Right, you don't have to.
Because then you don't have election, you don't have the expense of putting out the ballots. Right. So the motion on the floor is to approve the consent agenda items. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Those items are approved. Next up, we have our business items. So the motion to be considered is to authorize a superintendent who is designated to negotiate a contract for an electronic message board at Alma Schrader through Coast to Coast LLC for a cost of twenty-six thousand one hundred thirty-one dollars and twelve cents, and execute the contract on behalf of the board. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Glenn, Mr. Ritter.
I have a question on this. It says we use them for other places in the district. Do we have, is this... I was kind of curious. I don't know anything about this. This just kind of seems expensive, but maybe it's not expensive.
Or electronic message board gets materialized and all of that.
Oh, I'm thinking like a message board where I'm typing emails, like, sending you like, a Google chat.
No, no, no. This is one of the big message boards. It's out in front of the school.
Oh, sorry. Never mind.
Digital banking.
Similar to the one that's in front of the junior high, right? It's like the one in front of the junior high.
I was going to recommend Google Chat.
So if Mr. Russell was to scroll to the other attachment.
Oh, wait, look, the other attachment.
Next one. Those are two of the options we're looking at. We're looking at option A, just because of the placement where this would be. Twelve foot wide is too wide for the placement, and I don't want a kid or a staff member at dismissal leaving the building and walking and hitting their head on it. So it's a great, it's a great picture, but, or rendering, but it wouldn't be practical. Well, kids text nowadays, so typically, they're looking at their phone, adults do too. So, yeah, right. To let you know, several other of our buildings already have these electronic message boards and marquees. We're just trying to get them deployed out to all of our buildings. It helps keep the information out there with the parents, upcoming meetings, holiday dates, spaghetti dinners, when we get back to those, book fairs, whatever it may be, students of the month, congratulatory messages, time and temp, so on and so forth. We have these already, about half of our build, a little bit over half, so we're looking at adding to them and using Dattronics as the software licensing. We already have that and own that, license it, so it makes sense to continue on with that product.
I'll give it to Hall.
Yeah, sounds good. Read all the attachments.
Anyone have any questions? All right, so the motion to be considered is to authorize a superintendent who is designated to negotiate a contract for an electronic message board at Alma Schrader through Coast to Coast LLC for a cost of twenty-six thousand one hundred thirty-one dollars and twelve cents, and execute the contract on behalf of the board. No further questions, comments, discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? It is approved. Thank you, sir. And next is a motion to be considered to authorize a superintendent who is designated to negotiate change orders on behalf of the board for the Jefferson Elementary Construction Project with Brock Miller Construction at a cost of thirty-four thousand seventy-six dollars. Have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Glenn, Mr. Ritter, discussion?
So, board, before you, you have a bundle of change orders and the descriptions you can see. Typically, throughout the construction process, you'll see some change orders that will save us money. Sometimes we have to spend a little bit more money. The two big ones here, we have to add an additional fire hydrant that was, came back, and they told us that needs to be added to this project by code, so we're going to add that. And then also, we're removing an exterior stairwell that went down to the basement to help waterproof that room, so we can still use it as usable space, and it will be, you'll still have access from an interior set of stairs, but this will help close everything up to the elements. There's a lot of concrete that needs to be taken, and stormwater that has to be diverted away and piped away, so on and so forth.
Anyone have any questions regarding any of the change orders? So the motion to be considered is to authorize a superintendent who is designated to negotiate change orders on behalf of the board for the Jefferson Elementary Construction Project with Brock Miller Construction at a cost of thirty-four thousand seventy-six dollars. There's no further comments, questions, discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. Thank you. And that is it for business this month. Next up, we have information proposals from any board members. Anyone have any good to the board? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Ritter, discussion, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.